Meeting on July 15, 2024, at 6:00 PM. The City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. Good evening, and the invocation will be given in Spanish by Sergio Quintero. Then please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
God bless each and every one of whoever's here, and I like to excuse myself. I just had a procedure, but I'm here, okay? Dear and beloved Jesus Christ, we come to you asking and praying, Lord, that you may bless each and every councilman and woman of the city, Lord. That you may bless Father, Mayor Rollins, so they can take wise decisions, Lord, that we need in the city, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you may bless, that you may bless everybody involved in this meeting, Father. Whoever needs an approval according to you, Lord, if it's your will, Lord, let them pass it, Father. But I pray, Lord, that everything that is going to be taking place today, Lord, that you may bless them, that it might be your will, Father, using the councilmen and women with a wise decision, Father. We pray in Jesus' name, Lord, and we thank you, Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rollin.
Here. And City Counselor, you asked for a moment of personal privilege, and the floor is yours.
I did, thank you, sir. I'd like to apologize on behalf of my firm and of my colleague, Todd Smith, who chose his words carelessly at the study session last week. There's no excuse for Mr. Smith's comments, which were inappropriate and unprofessional. Mr. Smith has submitted a personal apology, which you all have, and which I am happy to provide to anyone else who wants a copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coover. Okay, and that brings us to citizens' request, and I do need a motion for we have citizens or we have residents outside of the city that would like to speak tonight, and we have to waive our rules in order to do that. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rollin.
Yes, and the motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to citizens' comments. Lucy Young, you're coming forward, and you have five minutes.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence. I consider myself head monkey.
At your last meeting, a council member spoke about what they considered to be a successful
side with the Council Interview Committee. The council panel has not been successful, in my opinion, and this amendment should not be added to the Resolution 24-739. I have two examples. The first was during the last term of the late, great Karen DeLuci. The Council Interview Committee would not fill a vacancy on the PUAB. Councilmember DeLuci was fed up with the length of vacancies on that and other committees, so she submitted a resolution to name a candidate that was not only well-qualified but still serves on other city committees with honor. The council voted her resolution down, and the vacancy remained open for months. That applicant was, if that applicant was only allowed to serve on one city committee, we would lose an incredible asset. The second example is before the council interview process was established. A council member named a person to fill his vacancy, but the previous mayor pulled out applications saying that a council interview committee needed to be formed. The applicant and another person were scheduled for an interview. That same council member called in during the interview and said she wasn't able to attend. These two applicants were scheduled for three additional interviews. I was one of those applicants and very familiar with the PUAB items and had been very involved when I was a former councilwoman. The other candidate had a similar background and was a member of IndyEnergy. Neither of us were appointed, leaving that vacancy open for four months. While a lottery system may alleviate some of the conflicts in the interview process, it also usurps the council members' right to appoint board and commission members from their own district. Some of you were elected to represent a specific district's constituency. If this is amended, if this amendment passes, there would be no way to ensure that citizens of a specific district would be named to any board guaranteed, excuse me, to guarantee a balanced or fairly represented city. I will remind you that four out of the seven council members presently seated reside in the third district. This is why it is especially important to have council members from the first, second, and fourth districts keep their own voices in naming board and commission members. Proposed Amendment 3.1A talks about the concept of one voice. That doesn't have to mean expressing only one opinion as a committee member, only in the board's final decision. Consider the value of a more nuanced voice, one, excuse me, one that consciously leaves room for other voices to enter in the conversation. 3.1B in the proposed amendment states that the evaluation criteria must include diversity, equity, and inclusion. Permitting council members to name their own applicants allows for a diversity of discussion on all sides of the issue. I urge you to let opinion diversity show by allowing council members to name someone from their own districts. If forming the Council Interview Committee is so very important to fill positions, then why does Section 5D allow a chair to fill a vacancy with an alternate? There are few boards that have alternates, but shouldn't every position be filled by the council? This language seems to contradict the very amendment to create an interview process. Boards are made up of many people, and disagreements are normal. Is this amendment avoiding these disagreements or just about censuring council members from filling board and committee members? Perhaps that type of organizational culture will browbeat those minority opinions into silence. Allowing opinion diversity is how you teach the public that there are no easy answers. Robust discussions clear up misunderstandings. Creating a homogeneous view will only create more apathy. Speaking with one voice is a lot easier if you eject dissident voices, but you will never invite them at the table and succeed at that process.
You have one minute.
This "speak with one voice" becomes a nice way to say "echo me." I urge you to vote against the proposed amendment to form a committee interview, Council, Council, excuse me, Council Interview Committee, and keep the ability to serve on more than one committee in this resolution. The city doesn't have enough people beating down the door to serve now. Just take a look at all of your existing boards. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can maintain order, please, thank you. Mr. Talcott.
Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive, Independence. I'm going to read something that I think that we don't hear enough of, and I think it's important to bring it up occasionally. And before I do that, I do want to acknowledge my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. The First Amendment to the Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. We are a constitutional republic. Every day, the term democracy gets thrown around, and I believe it's been used so much that a lot of people no longer understand the true meaning. Democracy is led only by a majority rule, not as a representative government as we are supposed to be. As I have said here before, a democracy is two wolves and a sheep deciding what's for dinner. Let that sink in. Our government, from national down to the city level, is supposed to represent all of the people, not just the ones that agree with who is currently in power. The government should not make decisions and legislation solely on what they want but what the people want, what's best for the people, not the governing body. John Adams, one of our founding fathers, said, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Many other founders agreed, and many of us still do to this day.
Mr. Sorensen, you're next.
I'm Bob Sorensen. I live at 800 Southwest Powell Drive, Oak Grove, Missouri. I'm the immediate past president of Inpens Loggers Retirement Group. Mayor and council, I'm here to speak on the number eight on the consent agenda this evening. On the agenda this evening is the approval of post-65 health insurance contract with Cigna for 2025 and four possible one-year extensions. I would like to thank City Manager Zach Walker for allowing three members of our executive board, Marla Kimsey, Janet Conroy, and myself, to sit on the committee for the RFP selection process. I would also like to thank HR retiree Representative Bethany, CBiz Representative Jonathan, and the city staff. I believe this group looked hard at everything that was submitted and all agreed that the Cigna proposal was by far the best for both the city and the post-65 retirees. For the past five years, I have worked very hard with the city in regards to this insurance. In 2019, when this plan was developed and agreed to by both the city and post-65 retirees for the 2020 calendar year, the city manager stated that it saved the city $3.5 million in 2020. I decided to look at this current plan to see how it is working five years later. In 2019, when all post-65 retirees were in the Stay Well Plan, and more than 80% were in OAP 1 and 20% in OAP 2, if those retirees were still in Stay Well today, the cost to the city would be approximately $8,429,000. If you compare this to the 2024 cost of $2,951,000 for the current plan, that is a savings of $5,477,000 in 2024. So in the last five years, we have saved nearly $2 million in post-65 retiree health insurance from what we had in 2019. Marla Kimsey will speak to you about this also tonight in a couple of topics. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I would appreciate your support on this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. Next up is Marla Kimsey, please.
Again, hi, I'm Marla Kimsey. I reside at 25605 Southwest Wyatt Road in Blue Springs, Missouri. Good evening, Mayor, council members, City Manager Zach Walker, all of our loggers retirees here today, and all others present and watching the council meeting. I too come to speak to you about a consent agenda item number eight. I also, many thanks to Zach, our HR person Bethany Dickey, and the CBiz Rep Jonathan Kress for their efforts during this process. I'm not sure if Zach got beat as a child and was told he had to be nice to old ladies, but he is always kind to me, so I'll let that pass. Yeah. This item that is before you tonight, and I just want to explain on our agenda because it's been updated multiple times. I want you to understand, number one, that on the fourth paragraph down, you see that Cigna has proposed an 8.3 increase to the pharmacy plan, a 0.2% decrease to the custom plan. These are the only things that matter on this agenda. We have been in what is called a defined contribution plan since 2020, so it does not matter what the E increases are to the other plans. The only thing that counts is increases or decreases to the D, the prescription drug plan, and increases or decreases to the custom plan. And by defined contribution, I want everybody to understand, this means that the city is only paying 80% on the custom and the prescription plan, and no more. So the increases to the other plans are absorbed by the retiree. And just as an example, and I think we've said this down here, is that when the city is going to only pay 80% of the custom plan, those increases actually, the total cost of the plan is going to move from $312.16 per month to $327. My total was off, was 11 cents different than Zach. About $11.80 per month per retiree, and that's basically because of the 8.33% increase to the prescription plan. The custom plan is going down 0.2%, and everything else that is mentioned in here as far as rates have absolutely nothing to do with what the city pays. We have tried every year for the last six years, when the rates come out from Cigna and the city presents us with what our rates will be, they always have us come to a meeting. We always talk through these rates, and the city has worked very hard to keep these rates down, and we all know it. And we have all been very agreeable to this because we feel like it is in our best interest and the best interest of the retiree. So actually, you guys, and this will be the sixth year of this plan, in all of that time, our post-65 retiree agreed-to rates have gone up approximately $7.30 per year for the city. Just to give you even a close example of that, in 2023, the Medicare rate, which these people all play, was $164.90 in 2023. In 2024, that went up to $174.70. That's $9.80 a month, and that's only for medical benefits. I urge you, I encourage you, I beseech you, please pass consent agenda item number eight for the retirees tonight. Thank you.
Next up is Lee Phillips. Lee, please come forward.
Council Mayor, I have noticed several rehab and restored buildings on 23rd Street, 24 Highway, and Truman Road. I wanted to take a moment to thank you for that. It was also notable that members of this council were absent July 1, 2024. I am compelled tonight to talk about the charter. It's not that there is misinformation out there, it's actually the lack of substantive information by the pro-charter group and the council that appears to be the problem. Question one begins with, "Shall we change our charter throughout?" and Article 15. Shall and "throughout" are legal terms that mean if question one passes, the rest of the questions are moot points. In the city's slide comparison concerning Article 15, now Article 14, with legal counsel of our own, here's what we know. Current language in Article 15, Section 15.2, is where our state protections lie. Section 15.2 is titled "Amendment of Charter" and says, "This charter may be amended in any manner now or hereafter provided by the state constitution." That means that each change must be presented as an amendment with an explanation of the change and include any fiscal impact information if applicable. New language in the updated charter titled "Amendment of Charter," among other things, says, "This charter may be amended after being submitted to and approved by the registered qualified voters of the city of Independence or, in any manner now or hereafter, provided by the state constitution." Legally, this means any future changes can simply be presented to the voters without explanation or fiscal impact statements or according to the constitution. The word "or" gives a choice on how to amend our charter and eliminates the requirement to follow the state constitution. It literally takes away our state protections. We will be faced with these types of confusing and vague questions forever. Every day, we are walking the streets to inform and educate. Citizens are shocked and angry. A citizens' oversight group has spent over 1,000 combined hours combing the changes, comparing it to our current charter, while seeking legal advice to make sure we understood the meaning and language of the changes. Each question dangles a shiny object, in this case, bolded wording, in front of us so that we look at that and not the fact that our codified rights and protections are being deleted. Charters can be changed, but those changes cannot take away our codified rights that the voters have already passed according to the state constitution. We found that each question takes something away from the people. When you look at any of the five questions, you may see the bolded change, and it may be something you agree with. The non-bolded wording is mostly confusing, and perhaps you don't quite understand what that means. That's okay. I was very confused when I started this myself. That is what was intended. To be on the safe side, please vote, please vote no. We already have a productive charter. To vote no doesn't hurt us, but sends it back to the table for a more comprehensive review and citizens' input. Don't be swayed by distractions. In Article 5, Section 5.1 of our current charter, titled "Function of Local Government," we find this job description. "Council members, board members, and employees shall accept that the sole function of local government is the efficient provision of facilities and services deemed essential for the kind of urban living desired by the resident population." That job description does not give 20 people the autonomy to hit the go button on rewriting our charter. If you want to remove the wording about dairy farms because it's obsolete, then remove it, but do it legally and according to our state constitution. Changes are to be made one at a time using valid amendments that include an explanation of why it's being changed and any financial impact that change might have. Does anyone see any financial impact statements in any of these questions? These are not proper amendments. We have a right to full transparency. These questions are misleading and dark. When you think about fairness, the charter committee had 11 months to do their work. You gave the citizens two months. I call shenanigans. If everything was on the up and up, then why not follow the law? There is hope, though.
You have one minute.
I encourage all citizens to join together and vote no on all five questions. Let's just take a step back and send it back to the table. It doesn't hurt us to defeat all five questions, it simply leaves us with our current charter protections that can be amended properly at a later date. Our charter protects our rights, freedoms, and liberties. It has protected our departments and services just fine for over 50 years. It doesn't matter that, quote, "it hasn't changed since the Bee Gees were teenagers," end quote, or that, quote, "it's too many pages," end quote, or that, quote, "it's too old and needs updated language," end quote. We agree, but not in the manner it was done. What matters are the rights of the people who live here. There should be no rush to change it, much less rewrite the entire thing because it's too many pages. I say our charter should be as many pages as necessary to be able to protect the people and hold our government accountable and include the citizens which they significantly bypassed throughout this process. Tell the government that we, the people, are in charge and that they need to stick within the framework of their job description as defined in Article 5, Section 5.1 of our current charter, and vote no on August 6. Thank you, God bless.
Tony Summer, 220 West Mel Street. Today, I just wanted to speak very briefly on the Truman Connected Plan and wanted to advocate in favor of that. I've been excited for the Truman Connected Plan for a long time, and it's been delayed and delayed, and I've been just waiting for it, and so I'm excited that it's finally on the agenda tonight. And I wanted to speak a little bit because I've actually done this path on a bike before. That's, I went, you know, from 24 Highway, down to the square, down through Lexington, then Winter, then south on Sterling. And I did this because I wanted to go to the Price Shopper that's on 23rd and Sterling. I prefer to ride my bike to the grocery store as it allows me to get a little bit of exercise and a little bit of fresh air while running my daily errands, and, you know, it's also a little bit cheaper to do it that way than to drive everywhere. But unfortunately, the city's infrastructure is pretty hostile to people who want a bike for transportation. And honestly, I rarely do this trip on bike anymore because crossing 23rd Street on Sterling on a bike is simply too dangerous to justify. Truman Connected will help make this trip reasonable. This isn't going to make Independence a bike commuter's paradise overnight, but it is a step in the right direction for those of us who desire more freedom of transportation choice. I also wanted to speak very briefly on the charter changes. These changes are long overdue. There is a committee that spent over a year going step by step through the charter to make the best changes they felt were possible. Diversity opinions on there, there is conservative people, liberal people, everything between. And just a couple of examples of it being out of date, there's sections in the charter where when they ask for a year in a form, it starts with a 1, 9, and then space, space. And then it also, in many places, conflicts with state law. And when it conflicts with state law, the state law supersedes it, so there's, like, you could put whatever you want in the charter, but the state law applies. But it's still, we still need to take that section out and modify it to match state law just to make it less confusing for anybody who looks at the charter to see, you know, what we should be doing. And it could potentially save us in the future when we think we should be doing it this way, but state law says this way, just making everything clear and up to date. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Wilcox, 18707 East 28th Street. I have about 30 additional things I would like to say but can't cover it all in five minutes. Our group sought advice from legal counsel and a state assembly member to be certain we understood, and we have this correct. 100% responsibility falls on the city council because they approve this horrendous mess of a charter. It is completely unconstitutional, which makes city council members oath breakers, and that is a crime. You can verify what I say simply by sitting the current charter side by side with the red line charter and comparing. You'll see many instances where they removed the rights of the people. They removed our voice, our vote, and our ability to challenge. And language such as "every citizen shall be treated fair and equally by the city," it's gone. They disappeared it. And why do you suppose they would do that? Well, it appears in Article 1, they classed us. So they can't really treat us equally. They're saying they're taking certain people that are going to get proactively searched out for special treatment. They don't tell us who these people are or who gets to determine who these people are, but they definitely use the divisive discriminatory language. The purpose of a charter is to provide the structure of our government, defining the authorities, responsibilities, and limitations. They, it provides the state protections and seals the rights of the citizens, rights that state law says cannot be taken out of our charter. The city council decided it's not important to follow state requirements. It's not important to keep the structure or the key players that it takes to run a city of our size. Take them out, they're not important. The people will never have a voice on that again. And when they use the excuse that they didn't remove it, they just put it in the city code, well, understand this. When it's in the charter, it's a vote of the people, and when they remove it to the code, it now takes two readings and four votes of the city council, thus removing the people's voice and vote. Yes, they are removing our rights. Okay. Then they demoted the mayor position to basically an employee kind of thing. He doesn't, his stuff doesn't apply as an elected official anymore, and then they remove themselves. And then they remove themselves. The city council, in a council manager charter, said it's okay to remove the city council, which is the people's voice and the people's vote. But what they thought was important to leave in was the city manager position. It's the only person left in our charter. Enhancing that position to possess all the authority and the power to run every single aspect of our lives, every department, every project, every taxpayer dollar. It's all left to one unelected bureaucrat that nobody voted for. He gets the final word. He has the authority. And that, my fellow citizens, I believe is autocratic dictatorship. We are not a communist country, nor a communist state, and we will not allow the atrocity that proposes to put our citizens under totalitarian dictator rule. So please, to all the citizens, let's vote no on questions one through five, and we, the people, will then return. And I invite all of you to return with us to assist this council in creating a constitutional, a constitutional charter. We have to stand up for our rights and protect them. We must.
Thank you. Please, if I may ask, with all kindness and sincerity, because there was a speaker tonight that nobody clapped for. We want to be respectful to all members, please. Elisa Breitenbach, you are next.
My name is Elisa Breitenbach. I live at 1110 West Walnut Street. Last study session I came to, we all watched an alleged professional insult all of us taxpayers by calling us monkeys, which we discussed a little bit earlier, I know. To add insult to injuries, it all came about because of one of our council members asking, what if someone walks into our council with a T-shirt on that basically is opposing what the council is trying to promote? And is that allowed? Well, my question is, are we still in America? As it is, as if it is not enough, the alleged professional told the council member he would send him information secretly, because he didn't want to give the monkeys, as taxpayers, any ideas. Tonight, I just want to set the record straight. For the record, the city council is elected to support and promote and to protect our rights, our freedoms, our families, our businesses, and that should be your number one priority, not just your friends, okay? Because that's what we see here. Only friends get special treatment. Your one concern should not be your personal agendas and what you want to see get passed. Also, for the record, I will be voting no on all five questions, and I will not be needing a T-shirt to let people know how I'm voting, because they already all know. Guys, we all need to do better. As citizens, need to do better. You guys need to do better. I mean, it's sad that we use people, just your friends. I mean, I don't know how much that guy made coming here and having a 30-minute meeting, telling, calling us taxpayers monkeys, but God forbid, I don't get it. I really don't. And I'm sure they're going to probably pay your guy to come back out here and do some more crazy studies, and studies for bike lanes that's going to get people killed, and it's just shocking. It's shocking. Independence deserves better. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Dominick.
Good evening. Laura Dominick, 3525 Blue Ridge Boulevard. I did initial the thing on the sheet that said we were to stick to one topic, but I noticed we've kind of, some have deviated from that. So I do want to read something real quick that I looked up, based on something I just heard. The charter revisions do not change the form of government for the city of Independence thereby, they do not give Mr. Walker full reign to do whatever he wants. It says the municipal government provided by this charter should be known as a council manager government. It goes on to explain that, and that's not something that's going to be changed, so I just wanted to just mention that. So I'll get on to why I'm here. I hope you had a chance to review the YouTube videos, links that I provided you over the weekend, regarding why there was a change in 2021 to adopt a new method, or go back to an old method, of interviewing and selecting applicants for appointments to city boards and commissions. A couple of you were serving at that time, but since it's been three years ago, I can understand if you don't remember it as vividly as I do, because of the way I was so unprofessionally treated by a few of the council members at that time. I will cover a few questions and issues I have with the current draft of the Board and Commission Members Handbook, before I come back to the discussion of the interview and appointment process. When the handbook was on the agenda for the council meeting this January 2nd of this year, I reached out to the city manager and my fourth district councilman at the time with several questions. Though I didn't hear from my council member, I did hear back from Mr. Walker within the hour, which I greatly appreciated. By way of background, I've served on the Personnel Board for several years, and am currently the board chair. Obviously, the Personnel Board is defined by the charter. I also chair the Southwest Independence Redevelopment Corporation Board of Directors, and that board is defined by Revised Missouri Statute 353. Finally, I serve on the Kansas City Public Library as the trustee representing Independence. The library board is defined by Revised Missouri Statute 182, Section 701 through 723, which requires that the mayor of the city appoint the city's trustee. Given that information, my first question about the handbook was from Section 1, Subsection 1, Subsubsection A, that allows board members to serve in only one city-appointed position at a time. Mr. Walker's response to that question at the time was, "In my estimation, service on one board or committee does not apply to external committee appointments like the library board. Likewise, it doesn't apply to special committees that have a sunset period or a singular scope of work like the 353 committee. The goal is to get broader community participation, but not to limit the talents of those who are able and willing to serve in diverse capacities. If we need an amendment to clarify that, I can certainly work with council to pursue it." Councilmember Hobart did not bring up that question during that meeting, so it was never discussed, and there was no ever amendment made for clarification then, obviously. However, I do see a proposed amendment to the handbook tonight that would remove the limitation and make the distinction between structures of the boards and commissions a moot point. If that amendment is not adopted, I think the structure of all boards and commissions should be further defined in the handbook, with regards to not only membership, but all sections that are applicable in the handbook. The second question I had in January was whether or not Section 1, Subsection 1, Subsubsection C, means that a board member cannot serve consecutive terms, because they have to, quote, "complete a gap in service equal to a position's full term before they can be eligible for reappointment." I'm still not sure how to interpret that section. Section 1, Subsection 1, Subsubsection D, stating appointments should be made during the regular meeting in January, also raises questions for me. Board appointments don't always expire in November or December. In fact, many expire on June 30th, which coincides with the city's fiscal year. Getting a new candidate interviewed and on a study session and final regular session agendas would be tough, especially given the holidays that occur during those months, previous months. If this requirement is retained, does that mean a board would have to wait until January to get a position filled for someone's term that expires in June, or when a member dies or resigns from a committee midterm? I don't think that's your intention, to require a board to wait until January, so I would recommend this requirement be revisited or struck from the handbook as well. That point is the perfect transition.
You have one minute.
I'll read fast. "That point is the perfect transition to the section of the handbook regarding alternates, and on the boards I serve on allow for alternates, and though I may be completely off-base, I'm not aware of any that do. Using the Personnel Board as an example, if alternates were required, those alternates would have to attend all the meetings and hearings, because the policy changes we address are never covered in one session, and I personally would not want an alternate member to vote at a hearing regarding whether or not to make a policy change, move it forward to the city council without an alternate being completely informed of the decisions and discussions we had prior to the hearing. I still think that allowing the board member, even the chair, to choose an alternate could be interpreted by some as giving favoritism to an alternate who would vote the way the chooser wanted the vote to swing." Now, I'll go back to the discussion of the appointment process. I think the videos I emailed you would give you pause when considering going back to the interview process. The board that I interviewed with the position for on the PUAB on July 9, 2021, was itself very politicized, which led to the council meeting on July 19th, which then, when I was accused of many things that were not true, for which then I had to come back on April, or, excuse me, August 2nd, to defend. I lost a lot of respect for several members of the council after that debacle, but I have hope that this council will do better.
I'm sorry you exceeded your five minutes.
Thank you.
Please, thank you. Mr. Epperson, you're next.
Yeah, my name is Wes Epperson. I live at 3600 Poplar Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Council, I come tonight because I want to talk about fireworks. I've organized a group in Southwest Independence. I had some calls and some complaints about fireworks becoming, and I'm not un-American, so don't, I'm a patriotic, flag-waving American, but I agree with some of the complaints that these fireworks become a nuisance after a while. Unfort, well, unfortunately, I think Missouri has a real fascination with fireworks. In fact, we're the number one per capita seller of fireworks in the United States. It's not even close. And I can tell that by what goes on in my neighborhood. There's, Missouri allows cities and counties to, you know, make their own regulations concerning fireworks. That goes all the way from no fireworks at all, to different dates, times, what kind of firework you can shoot off. But I don't think any of these cities and counties that allow fireworks allow anything other than what is considered a consumer firework, sold in a fireworks stand, a 1.4G class. The real problem is the illegal fireworks that are being shot off all over Independence. In fact, they're still going off. We hear one or two of them a night, still, in our neighborhood. And here's my concern. The effect that these illegal fireworks have on pets, on my neighbor's little baby, on my 94-year-old mother, who told me she can't get to sleep at night or stay asleep. She's a widow. She's lived, my dad's been gone 10 years. She told me that I was there Sunday, and she has to take medication to get to sleep. She has anxiety. And she gets woke up by these, they're not fireworks. They're dynamite. They're explosions that have been going off all over town, and I've noticed more than this year than I've ever noticed. My neighbor is a retired Marine. He did three tours in Vietnam. I was over there and talked to him, and I said, Fred, how do these fireworks affect you? He said, they bother me a lot. He doesn't shoot off fireworks, but he put probably 100 American flags around his yard for the 4th of July. So my question is, and I want to tell you one more experience that I had, and this isn't secondhand, I saw this with my own eyes. I went out on the 5th of July. I tried to walk my little dog that day, and down the street, they had a fireworks party going on. It was, I don't know, 5, 6 o'clock at night.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay. So I turned around to go back to the house. About that time, two young boys came out, and their, I assume it was their mother and grandmother had given them a firework. They came out in the middle of the street, and I was still kind of walking down the street. She told me I needed to get back. I said, why? She said, because they're going to shoot off dynamite. That's her exact words. The two boys, young boys, carried out a firework. They set it in the middle of the road. It was, I don't know, big around, maybe eight, 10 inches long. They set the firework off, and it sounded like a bomb. Now, if there'd have been a rock there, somewhere near that firework, it could have been a problem. And the old saying goes, all safety laws are written in blood. I don't want some little child or somebody to lose a hand, an eye, or even their life. The city council, I believe, needs to review the firework situation we have in Independence. And to the people that have legal fireworks stands, you need to help find out who's selling all these bootleg fireworks in Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to proclamations, and we have a proclamation for recognizing the 40th anniversary of the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Sons of American Revolution. Mr. Grover, I know you're going to come forward and receive your proclamation. I'm just going to read a couple of things on it, if I could, please. Whereas the City of Independence City Council greatly esteems those efforts of preserving the past benefits and present and future to our community, and whereas Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Missouri Society of the American Sons of the Revolution was established as an organization 40 years ago, at Van Horn High School of Independence, Missouri, on July 7, 1984, and was officially in a charter on August 4, 1984. And then it goes on and names many of the members of your group, and with the Sons of the American Revolution. I won't read all of them, because it's extensive, but we do want to, in fact, take this moment for all of the work that you do, Mr. Grover. On behalf of the Sons of American Revolution, I know you, every event that you're invited to, you go to. I see you often, so I just want to say thank you for your work and recognize you for that. So thank you much, very much, Mr. Grover. I'll come out and give this to you, and we'll take a photo. Thank you. And, Mr. Grover, I might have to have your help on this. Stay right there, but I just want you to nod yes if I'm correct. One of the things that you shared with me that you couldn't hear, because we weren't right in front of a microphone, but I do want to share with you, from, Mr. Grover, is that you were with Doc Ballard the other night. Doc Ballard, if I'm correct, is the only living Medal of Honor winner, Congressional Medal of Honor winner, in the state of Missouri. He lives right down I-70, and I know he's also at many, many events. I see him quite often, too. And so you're with him Saturday, and he is an extraordinary man. If you ever get a chance to meet him, it's an extraordinary experience. And he's also, if you agree with me, Mr. Grover, an extremely funny man. Would you agree? He tells great stories. So thank you very much, Mr. Grover. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I move to approve the reports or recommendations of the city manager.
We have a second. We've got a motion and a second to approve the items for the consent agenda. Does any council members wish to pull any items off?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, she was first, and I'll come right back to you, my friend. Okay?
I'd like to pull number five.
Okay. Councilmember Vaught would like to pull item number five. Thank you. Councilmember?
Item number 24739.
Okay. Items 24739, is that correct?
That would be correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. There are two items pulled. Anyone else wish to pull any other items? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, let's please take the roll for all of the items on the consent agenda minus item number five and item 24-739, which is a resolution.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Councilmember Vaught, item number five, and the floor is yours.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this for 30 days.
Okay.
Being new to the council and new to this phase of the Truman Connected Project, I just would like to get some more information and learn what all this phase entails.
Okay. We've got a motion to postpone it for 30 days. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I actually, I know this has been, this stuff's been on a study session before. However, I think it's been a while, and so just as a refresher, I would actually like to see it go to a study session.
And would you like to, well, we've got one motion on the floor to postpone it, but we could certainly talk about which date we would have it on the agenda, unless there's any further discussion on that. But would you like to, you are in order to make a motion for putting on a particular
Well, we have to do this motion first, correct? We have to do this motion first, correct, before I make another one?
If we postpone it for 30 days, we postpone it for 30 days, then we could discuss how we want to, what day we want to put it on the study session. Because postponing for 30 days really is, it won't show up again for another 30 days for a council meeting, but we could, in fact, discuss it at a study session at a time like that if you made the motion, you know.
After we do this motion, correct?
Yep. Yep. But I will recognize you for that after we make this motion.
Thank you.
Anyone else further discussion on the motion to postpone number, item number five for 30 days? Okay, we have a motion, postpone it for 30 days, item number five. Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, then I'll recognize Councilmember Stewart after that.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number five is postponed for council action for 30 days. Councilmember Stewart, you're recognized to discuss the item with regards to when you would like to see it on a study session.
Just whenever, I guess not the next one because that was pretty full, but the first one in August, I guess.
Okay. We've got a motion to postpone this to the first study session of August. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this to the 30th, for the first meeting in August. Any further discussion on this?
Point of order.
Please.
Are we actually postponing this item, or we're just bringing it to a study session? We're just, we're just saying we're going to discuss it at a study session. We're not actually postponing this. I'm looking at Mr. Grover.
Sure. I consider what you just did on your last motion to be postponing it 30 days. So from a council, it'll come back in approximately 30 days at that, at that council meeting. Separately, what I'm understanding, Councilmember Stewart wants to do is have it, appear on a study session for discussion, which can happen independent of when it's going to be. So you're, so you've already postponed it. That's done. Now you're just asking it to appear for discussion on a study session. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, make me consensus for that, correct?
Technically, we don't need to vote on that. If you all are good with that, we'll make that happen.
Are you good with that, Councilmember? Just bring it up.
I'm very happy with that, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, then that'll proceed, and item number five is complete. That brings us then to item 24739. And Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
I'm actually going to make a motion that we indefinitely table this item. I think there is, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of dispute on what needs to happen with this, especially if you talk to the, listen to the public speakers tonight. I have a lot of problems with it. From what I understand, there's going to be an amendment tonight on top of an amendment, and to be honest, I don't even know what I'm voting for at this point. So my motion is to indefinitely table, send it back to staff, and if we have any recommendations that we want, you know, we can send them to Zach, and maybe he can make some changes, and then possibly we can, we can have another study session about it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone item number 24739. The motion to postpone is, or excuse me, to table it is on the floor. Any discussion on tabling this item?
I have procedural questions, Mr. Grover.
Please proceed.
Is a motion to table for a period of time indefinitely, is that in order, or is it a tabling is just tabling, right?
Sure. So technically, if you're moving it out of this meeting, it's postponing. And so it can either be postponed to a certain period of time or a certain meeting, or it's just postponed indefinitely. So you can do postpone indefinitely. If it's postponed indefinitely, it just means that we're not sure when it's going to be ready, and whenever it is, is when it will come back. So it won't automatically appear back here until staff gets some direction, whether that, at a study session or some other way, to bring it back. So it's up to you all. It can be postponed indefinitely if you're not sure when it's going to come back, or it can be postponed to a date or meeting certain.
But the language wasn't to postpone indefinitely, it was to table indefinitely.
It was to table. I, I mean, I, right. Technically, table, it just means to move something within, within the same meeting. However, those get, often are used interchangeably, so, but technically, it should be a motion to postpone it either to a date certain, a meeting certain, or indefinitely, and that's up to you all.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'll amend my motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay, we've got an amended motion to postpone indefinitely. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to postpone it indefinitely. Councilmember Stewart, any further discussion?
Not by me, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else other further discussion on postponing item 24739? Okay. Seeing no other discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone item 24739, please.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion is postponed, five in favor, two opposed. And that brings us to our regular agenda, item 24049. Madam City Clerk, can you please proceed?
24-049, second reading, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,021,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement for DRE conference fees and overtime programs for the police department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks from October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24049?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, one of the issues we have at least asked questions about in the past is when we accept grants, does it cover the entire cost of the grants, so not just the salary, the overtime, but also the retirement loggers' benefits? Just making sure.
Yes, so every year, loggers is running calculations on not only our straight time costs, but also overtime, so they're getting a true cost of what it takes for us to run our, our business, so that they'll know what those obligations are going to look like into the future. And the city's contributions right then are based on those hours worked and the costs and such. So yes, any of these grants that we are incurring, we're factoring future overtime expenses and pension liabilities into those.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on 24049, please? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item 24049 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24050. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-050, second reading, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $485,250 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement for LUTSAC conference fees and overtime program for hazardous moving violations enforcement from October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 24050? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24050 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Pardon me. That brings us to 24051. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-051, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring bright-of-way and temporary construction easements for the Truman Connected Phase 1 project, project number 112102, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item 24051 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24052. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-052, second reading, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $125,685, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Any further discussion? On 24052. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 24052 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25, or excuse me, 24053. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-053, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Office of Justice Programs Fiscal Year 2023 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program through a memorandum of understanding with Jackson County, Missouri, which allocates $62,360 to the City of Independence, Missouri for the police department's use, appropriating the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project. Second reading.
Any questions or comments on 24053? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. That brings us to 24054. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-054, second reading, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $76,250 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for occupant protection enforcement programs from October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24054? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24050 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24055.
24-055, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the 24-highway improvement steel pole installation project, project number 500000835, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24055? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24055 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to 24056. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to post-
Please forgive me.
Oh.
I, I jumped to that knowing that you'd want to talk, and I wanted to make sure I gave you the opportunity, but we forgot to read the ordinance, so let's read the ordinance, and then I will give you the floor.
24-056, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Truman, excuse me, the Truman Connected Phase 2 project, city project number 112102, federal project number CMAQ3379 (441) and CRP3379 (446). Second reading.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I would like to postpone this to a study session.
We have a motion to postpone this item to a study session.
Second.
We have a second. So we've got a motion and a second to postpone this. Councilmember Vaught, any further discussion on the item? Councilmember, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just making sure that this does not put us in an awkward spot with MoDOT, we're able to postpone this for a period of time. There's no immediate need to take care of this contract.
In speaking with the assistant city manager, if the city were to want to accept the $4.5 million of grant funds associated with this, we would need to have those incurred by the end of the calendar year and the design portion of that. So we will have a little bit of a tight timeline, but nothing that will disrupt our ability to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor to postpone item 24056, put it on the study session, seeing Seeing no further discussion, we'll make the motion to, we'll make a, take a vote.
Just a question.
Please.
Will that come back in the following meeting after the study session?
What's your recommendation, Mr. Kovar, on that?
So, the way you're doing it now with this motion is essentially, it's essentially postponing indefinitely and sending it to a study session at the same time. Again, unless you tell us when to bring it back, either with a motion here or at a study session or some other time, then, you know, so it won't come, it doesn't necessarily have to come back at a certain time. If you want to come back at a certain time, then that should be part of the motion. So, right now, the way it's been read right now, I consider that essentially postponing indefinitely and sending it to a study session. I don't know if that's your intent or not, but that's how I interpret the current motion.
Okay. So, we could make a motion, if I'm clarifying, to postpone and also set a specific date that we'd like to see it at a study session.
Again, yes, you could do both of those. Again, like previously, you don't, technically, we don't have to have a motion to have it appear in a study session. You know, so if you want to have it at a certain, come back at a certain time, then I would think you would make that part of the motion. If you're just throwing it out there and it'll come back whenever it comes back, then that would be to postpone it indefinitely. So, it's up to you all. There's different options.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on just one second. I'll make sure Councilmember Fears had the floor. Any further discussion?
Well, my hope maybe we would do 30 days as your other one, and that way we're talking about both at the same time, but that's up to you. You made the motion.
Does that work to modify your motion to-
Yes, yes, 30 days.
Postpone it for 30 days and have a study session prior to that?
That works.
Okay. And the second is still good? Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. And the second's still good, so, okay. Very good. So, we've got a motion and a second to postpone for 30 days and then put it in a study session. In the meantime, any further discussion on the postponement of item 24-056? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for 24-056 to be postponed for 30 days.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-056 is postponed for 30 days. That brings us to 24-057. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero five seven, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a change order to the construction contract C 500000804 and Design Contract PO Number 24000282 for the Truman Depot and Pacific Trail Project Number 511702 and making necessary appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 24-057? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-057 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 24-058. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero five eight, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring right-of-way general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the Truman Depot renovations and Pacific Avenue Trail Project, project number 511702, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24-058? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-058 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-059. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero five nine, second reading, an ordinance vacating an existing right-of-way of all that part of the southeast quarter of Section 3, Township 49, North Range 32 West, located in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-059 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. It brings us to 24-060. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero six zero, second reading, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just making sure that we're following our own document retention policy and fulfilling the requirements in that.
Yes, this has been verified by the city clerk in partnership with the city attorney and our department directors. All the records being proposed for disposition here have been verified that they are past the retention period and ready to be disposed of.
Any further discussion on item 24-060? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, sorry.
That was a yes?
That's a yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that was six in favor, one here. Oh, excuse me, that was seven in favor and zero opposed. Please forgive me. I couldn't pass that one up.
I understand.
Brings us to 24-061. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero six one, second reading, an ordinance amending Article 6 of Chapter 8 of the City Code changing the procurement policy to align with revised statutes of Missouri, RSMO Chapter 34. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 24-061?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, could you give us an overview on this and what is being changed?
Yes, sir. Majority of what is being changed here are guidelines that were enacted by the General Assembly in the legislative session this past year and also requiring us to update how information is advertised for competitive bid processes, how long, things of that nature. Additionally, beyond that, this does seek to increase the purchasing authority of the city manager up to $100,000 and clarifies the spending authority for supervisors in the city as well as department directors.
Okay. I know that I was on the city council and we lowered the threshold to $50,000. What's, I guess, what's the need for the update at this point?
It's our understanding the council would like us to work in a more efficient manner. Oftentimes, these items that are under $100,000 get held up, require us to bring those to the council meeting. So, we're seeking to return this back to the level it was at before it was lowered by the council a few years ago to give greater authority and efficient operation of the city's government to city staff.
Then I'm going to make a motion to amend that, and we keep it at the $50,000. We keep everything else the same.
There's a motion to amend the portion of raising the city manager's approval rating from $100,000 back to $50,000, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes, to keep it as it is.
Okay. Or keep it as it is. Very good. I love your brevity there. We have a motion to keep that portion on the city manager as is. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. So, we've got a motion and a second to keep the city manager's portion as is. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, if I'm clear on this, if we pass this amendment, then am I correct that department directors and city manager would have exactly the same amount of-
Without further amending this item, yes, sir. And as a reminder, this item was brought to the Audit and Finance Committee before the item has appeared for about the last month on the agenda.
Right. And the Audit and Finance Committee recommended approval of this.
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
And just for clarity, these would be budgeted items. These are not extra budgetary discussions. These are things that we would have already approved in the budget, at least the range of topics in department budgets, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I should also mention, we had a meeting of our Eastern Jackson County city managers cohort this past Friday, and our peer cities are also increasing their spending authority for their city managers commiserate with their populations as well.
So, that'd be a dollar-for-dollar match, then basically, or a dollar-per-person match, roughly?
Approximately, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for the insight on what the other municipal cities are doing. I'm not super concerned with what they're doing, because if we really wanted to get weird, I believe these city manager authority in Kansas City is $1.5 million. We're not asking for that, for sure. The $100,000 mark is, has been discussed at the Audit and Finance Committee for several reasons. One, given the COVID situation and the way the procurement process is and established and is established well, but given some of the low-level discussions and pricing that we have, some of those pricing standards that we might get through municipal services or procurement process may be only good for a week, seven days or 10 days. The fluctuation with asphalt, oil-based products, or metal fluctuates greatly. So, that is the reason why, so we can stay streamlined and also keep things more efficient. We discussed this, and we were just at Audit and Finance Committee, and this is why we brought it forward for consideration to the council.
And the other piece that I would just add on to that is that inflation in and of itself has increased the price of everything. So, you know, it seems reasonable that we would, you know, increase the approval process as well, so.
Anyone else have a further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, which was motioned in a second to keep the city manager's authority level at the current level of $50,000. Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. And the amendment fails. Six opposed, one in favor. That brings us back to the main discussion of the ordinance, 24-061. Any further discussion on ordinance 24-061?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, we've had discussion tonight about the city charter having 60 years of catch-up for changes in state statute. Do you think that this is one of the examples of things that when they're held outside of the city charter allows us to be more rapid in being in compliance with state law?
I do. This is the second consecutive meeting the council's had where we have brought an ordinance forward to you to update an item that was enacted this past legislative session. The last meeting, we had to change our code to reflect the maximum age for municipal court judge. That was something passed in Jefferson City this year. The procurement policy change was another revision that was made. This is something we're able to bring to you and update the city code to ensure that we're in compliance with state law.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
While I disagree with the increase in the, what the city manager can spend, I'm going to go and be in voting yes on the entire thing, just so it is in compliance with state law.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember. Any other further discussion on 24-061? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-061 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-062. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero six two, second reading, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024-25 submitted budget by reducing the museum fundraising account in the tourism fund by $150,000. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Move to table this item. If I get a second, I'll speak to why.
Second, okay.
So, the reason that I moved to table it is, in discussion with the city manager, he's in agreement that fundraising is not, we're not ready for fundraising in this effort yet, but that we are ready for a feasibility study. And so, if we table this, it leaves the funds available for a feasibility study. It won't be that much money, but it does leave funds available. And because we don't know exactly how much it is, then the funds will be available and allow us to do that. And that's, I think, what we really need to do at this point.
Okay, very good. So, we've got a motion and a second to table item 24-062. Any further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion to table 24-062. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-062 is tabled, seven in favor of tabling the item and zero opposed. That brings us to 24-063. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero six three, second reading, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024-25 submitted budget by increasing the Communications Department account in the general fund by $130,000. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24-063?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give some background on why this is needed? The position that it's going to be used to fund, and anything else you think is pertinent?
Yes, I'd be happy to. As the council will recall, this past budgetary season, one of the recommendations in the budget was to reconfigure our city communications division. So, we went from six full-time employees in that division down to three full-time employees, savings of approximately $260,000, give or take a few thousand dollars. The budget that was adopted by the council did include those three positions. So, there's the videographer position, Steve who comes in here and may see him from time to time on a Monday night, our public information officer, as well as our public relations manager. Those three positions, again, were part of your table of organization. What did not occur was getting the public information officer position, the funds appropriated to back that position. So, the dollars were there for the videographer position, as well as the public relations manager. The funds were not there for the public information officer. In an effort to ensure our budgets as accurate as possible, we need to do this amendment to ensure we don't think we've got more in our reserve account than what we really do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on 24-063?
And just to be clear, this is salary and benefits, correct?
Yes, sir. Salary and benefits, both.
Any further discussion on 24-063? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. The item does pass. Six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero six four, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to C2/PUD General Commercial Planned Unit Development and a preliminary development plan for the properties located at 30315 West Maple Avenue. First reading. Twenty-four dash zero six five, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements for the East Heidelberg Road Bridge Replacement Project, project number 112203, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. First reading.
Very good. That brings us to councilmember comments. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Okay. Well, to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I think I have very little tonight. I just returned today from 10 days at scout camp, marshaling around a number of young men, in our case, in our, from our community, and I'm, my brain is fairly mush, so I think I'll just leave it at that and let you go.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Stewart?
Mr. Mayor, you threw me off there. I had my microphone ready to go, and then you chose somebody else. Anyway, I just had a brief clarification. I asked a question last week of our acting, I believe it was our acting city attorney, Mr. Smith, regarding if somebody can wear campaign shirts, hats, whatever, inside, you know, the city council chambers. And he, I wasn't just referring to, you know, if it's something the city was putting on there, I was actually referring to if they wanted to wear their candidate hat for any candidate, just name any office. And last week, he, you know, did make the comment, you know, I'll send it to you. So I don't like the idea of, you know, the secrecy. So, Mr. Kovar, you shared an email with us earlier, and I don't, you didn't label it, you know, like it was private, you know, between, can you, can you share with your thoughts on that?
Sure.
Okay.
And this is, you know, generally consistent with what I have opined on before. So fundamentally, you know, council meetings are a limited public forum. That means we're allowed to have some reasonable restrictions. That's how we can limit, you know, how long people can talk and that sort of thing. In terms of attire and what people are wearing, you know, generally, unless it is somehow causing a problem, something that, you know, potentially is offending, you know, other members of the audience, or has some sort of inappropriate image or something like that, you know, if they're just in the audience, that's not going to, you know, something we're going to address. That includes campaign materials, whether that's related to the city or the president, you know, presidential election or anything like that. You know, the one sort of caveat to that, and we've had this situation before, is the city is also not allowed to utilize resources to promote a candidate or a ballot issue. And so I have taken the position that, you know, once someone, you know, gets up to the podium, at that point, the cameras are on them, they're on our YouTube channel, they're, you know, potentially, you know, using city resources to support a candidate or a cause. And my position is that that's inappropriate and potentially puts us in violation of state law. And so when that has come up in the past, I have asked a specific individual to, you know, put cover up or turn their shirt inside out or do something, which they obliged, and that was a one-time thing. So fundamentally, if it's just in the, in the audience in the gallery, there's really not an issue with it. If it comes to actually speaking, you know, if it's on a candidate or ballot issue, because I think that also creates liability for the city, that's my recommendation. In the end, it's, you know, up to the mayor's presiding officer of the meeting, and fundamentally you all, as to what you are okay with or not okay with, but that would be my position on it. So generally, yes, they can wear candidate and campaign material in the gallery, but I recommend that someone not be allowed to do that, so they have a hat on that says, you know, so-and-so for president. My recommendation is that they have to take that off if they're going to be at the podium, so that there's no confusion as to the city allowing, you know, certain candidates or anything like that to be receiving city resources or time.
Okay. We just had, we have some elections coming up, some pretty important ones, so.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted to make sure we were very clear on our rules going forward on this, so.
And we can certainly, you know, I can take a look at the, at the, what they fill out in order to come to speak and see, maybe we can do some tweaks on that to make, to sort of clarify that, just so we're all on the same page. But again, just in terms of general audience members there, you know, again, without, you know, I'd say really extreme exceptions, there, people are allowed to wear if they want to wear.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Vought?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, just a couple of things. I had a really great conversation with the HOA Board from Cardinal Woods, walked their neighborhood a little bit with them, and had a really great conversation. I want to thank them. And then councilmember Vought and I were given a tour of the Courtney Bend Water Plant, which was really interesting, and the staff was really wonderful, and I'm really proud of the work they do. I don't know if any of you have had the experience where you're traveling, you know, a great city, and you fill your cup up with water, and you can't believe how terrible it tastes. And we have a lot to be proud of. We have the best water, and if you spend any time other places, you find that out pretty quickly. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. You may have noticed it's hot outside. We have vulnerable folks in our community, seniors, people with little kids, air conditioners go out. I just want to be sure that people know that you can come to the Sermon Center into the lobby there, acts as a cooling center. That's open Monday through Thursday, 8 to 8, and Friday and Saturday, 8 to 5, is a place for people to get a little bit of respite. The other is, I appreciate very much the combined traffic enforcement that we had last week. They pulled folks over for speeding, for moving violations. 160 people got ticketed. This was combined between Sugar Creek, Independence, and the sheriff. We are seeing so many more accidents. We've had a record number of pedestrian injuries in the metro, so reminding people of the traffic rules is key. So I appreciate that combined combo. My next item is, I heard from a lot of community members how frustrated they were with fireworks, that the period of time seemed to be extended when people were using them, and just the volume of the concussive explosives. And so I'd like to ask the city manager with the indulgence of my colleagues that at some point this fall, we have that as a study session to look at, what are our ordinances? Are there any ways that we can restrict the size of any of those? I recognize enforcement is really tough, but encouraging our fireworks folks to pass out information, you know, you can only blow them up from here to here, not after 11 o'clock at night, et cetera, I think those things could be really helpful. I know, I know that our parks were absolutely littered with fireworks debris, and it's illegal to set things off in the park. So those are some of the other areas for us to talk about. My last item is just sadness for Mr. Trump and his family for that terrible act. We, as a community and a country, have much to think about in regards to how we treat each other and the well-being of people who are willing to run for office. I'm also sad that we had to change our procedures in here, and you've got barriers now. Normally, you'd be able to come up and visit with us before meetings. Some of my best conversations happen when people are just here and have the opportunity to visit. I'm sure that we will all make ourselves available afterwards for anybody who wants to come and talk to us about items that you would normally have done before. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, couple transit-related items. One, there is an opportunity for the KCATOD for the Blue Ridge Crossing area. That is a planning and sustainable places 2024 call for projects. If you go to KCAT, planning sustainable places, you can see a list of projects, and you can add your comments to that. And this is a ranking to have funding going into these different areas for these studies, for the transit centers. They can have a really good financial and growth impact in those communities that do those. The mayor and I attended a discussion from the KCAT last Friday. It was a discussion on regional transit fares and regional coordination of transit fare programs. It was a beginning discussion from Frank White III, who is the executive director, to kind of get a better handle on how we're going to move forward regionally as transit decisions are being made. It was a good plenary meeting, and it was good to be there to meet some of our counterparts. I want to be one of the first, and Mr. City Manager, I don't want to take any thunder on what you're planning, but we have a new assistant city manager that is starting work today. I've had the great honor and pleasure of working with Charlie DeSalle. Previously, he had worked for the City of Independence as Regulated Industry, and then at Deputy Community Development Director. He is now back as assistant city manager. He'll be working with community development team and our economic development team. We got him right to work, and he went to one of our Inglewood Community Improvement District meetings today, and it's really good to see how he can look and see how Independence is changing, and it has been changing for the best, and I wish it well and looking forward to working with you again.
Thank you, councilmember. I just have a couple of things. We will have a boards and commission report in just in a second, so don't be remiss and do that. But on Saturday, Bingham Wagner had an event where they had crafts and all of that, and it was a great event. I got an opportunity to serve biscuits and gravy with Madeline and Wanda, who made them. They do a great job. I highly recommend, if you want to get the biscuits and gravies next year, I will be there again serving them, and it'll be your opportunity to get them. They go quick, so Madeline and Wanda just do a great job. Also, Mr. City Manager, I may have need your help in this, and I hope I don't step on councilmember Perkins' comments with KCATOD Blue Ridge Crossing area promoting that so people can give their feedback. If you can give the public some thoughts on that and how we can promote that feedback, I'd be extremely grateful if you've got a moment to, or if you feel comfortable talking about that.
We will be sharing information across the city's various social media platforms about where the community can go and provide comments. That process is very heavily reliant on public comment in terms of then determining who or what projects receive funding. As transit continues to be a major priority that is not often funded at the level we would like to see it be, this is a great opportunity to bring not only additional transit dollars, but transit assets to our community. So if the public feels so inclined, we would certainly encourage them to make those public comments on that website, because it certainly helps in the final evaluation and scoring of those proposals.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I forgot to mention this. Mr. City Manager, can you remind people of the website? You've been receiving questions about the charter, and I know they can submit those questions.
Okay, so the webs, the email address to send any questions you have about the charter, So just as if you were going to email a member of the council or city staff has that same ending, indeppmo.org, so citycharter@indeppmo.org. Next Monday night, in addition to the questions that we receive, two other opportunities to engage with the charter amendments. There will be a second public open house. Members of the council have been invited, members of the Charter Review Commission have been invited, city staff, like the city attorney that worked closely on that process will be here. In front of where the council is seated here will be display boards featuring the five questions, so there'll be an opportunity to ask questions, gain additional insider information. The questions that are emailed in to us, we are then providing those to the committee chair, who will be presenting at the study session, again, as was done before, about the amendments, and she will utilize those questions to inform her presentation and try to get through as many of those as we possibly can based on the volume that we receive.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I know we're kind of going a little wanky and out of order, just to follow those comments, too, with the comment portal with our charter review. I did have some amendments at the last minute. There were some different thoughts and concerns. We worked through them at that time, but just for the record, that charter portal has been around or was up for quite some time prior to the city council final decision. The city council has been working on the charter review for almost two years from beginning phase of having discussions on who's going to be on the citizen committee all the way now. So the fact that some think we have not been working on this for two or several years or not enough time, I would ask, where have they been for two years when this conversation has been moving forward?
Thank you. And I just want to make just a general comment, hopefully on behalf of my colleagues and myself. The events that happened Saturday saddened me. Violence of any kind in a public forum, when people are expressing their opinions, as we so heartedly say we're in favor of free speech, we need to protect that right for everyone, regardless of what they say and how they say it. So I, as a country, we do need to come together and really ask ourselves, what is an appropriate Political violence is not discourse, it is violence. And there's no place for it in our society. It saddens me that we have to put these up. I like to be out with people, I like to hear their concerns, and so a friend of mine texted me something that impacted me. What have we become when we resort to that? And that's just a question for all of us. With that being said, we'll do reports and commissions, and then, Mr. City Manager, I will give you the last word.
A recommendation has been made to reappoint Ron Brew, James Conley, and John Suturo to the Tax Increment Financing Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing these individuals to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Madeline Osborne and Dan McGraw to the Sustainability Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint David Campbell to the Tree Commission. Staff recommends direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Joe Flick to the Industrial Development Authority. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Diane Kaiser and Kay Douglas to the Independence Park Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Christine Hughes to the Board of Ethics. Staff, pardon me, staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Wesley Epperson to the Street Improvement Oversight Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to the above board.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I'll try to be brief. As councilmember Perkins mentioned, Charlie DeSalle has returned to the City of Independence after six years of studying abroad in Iowa. We welcome him back and hope you learned great things in Iowa, Charlie. I wanted to briefly mention it's construction season in the great state of Missouri, and Independence is certainly getting in on that action. Back in 2022, the city began employing a new method in addition to our regular street overlay campaign of doing scrub seals across town. A scrub seal in its most simple form is when a sand-gravel-oil mixture is put down onto roads that aren't quite yet at a point where they need to be overlaid, but cracks are coming in. This helps preserve those roads for an additional four to six years, which allows us to stretch our dollars further to do overlays of roads that are beyond their useful life. It also is way more cost-effective, so we can do these seals for about 30 to 50 cents on the dollar for every dollar that we put into overlay. It is messy, I recognize that. Oil, sand, gravel, et cetera. But the process, hopefully, is quick in the neighborhood, though I appreciate that it is certainly somewhat disruptive. If your neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods that's going through this this summer, and you've got questions about it, we have city staff who are very familiar with this and well-spoken. I know councilmember Wiley is working with us to set up a meeting with an HOA in her council district, and we'd be happy to extend that same offer to any of the other council members, as again, it's somewhat of a new process as well. I would like to mention, I know the Kentucky Avenue Bridge in councilmember Perkins' district is one the city has advocated to have replaced for about the last five years now. It has been closed for about that long. Congressman Cleaver has included that in his recommendation. Congressman Cleaver has included that in his recommended projects for his district. The House Appropriations Committee went through a significant cut-down period last week. A lot of projects were either eliminated or their budgets were reduced, but the Kentucky Avenue Bridge is still in there and for the full amount that was originally requested by the congressman. So, we are a step closer to having federal funds that would allow us to replace that bridge, so we're excited about that. Would just like to mention, because it's something of an issue I'm passionate about, certainly love when folks come and speak, and love to hear the things they have to say. I am a member of the International City and County Managers Association. In fact, I'm a credentialed manager of that organization. Part of our Code of Ethics is a commitment to that form of government. I am looking at the seven individuals who are duly elected by the citizens of the city to represent. There are no changes in the city charter that strip the council of that authority. I still am hired by and serve at the pleasure of the council, take my direction from this group as a body, try to meet with each of you individually to understand your policies, your goals, the things you want to get done, and then help build consensus among the council for those. But at the end of the day, it is the direction of the council as the policymakers, and nothing about the changes proposed in the charter strip the council of that responsibility or the citizens' rights to elect those leaders who then provide me with my day-to-day direction. So, just want to advocate for that form of government as it's somewhat of an ethical obligation of mine.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that being said, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.